Happy Tuesday to you, and we are calling our meeting to order this morning. Today is Tuesday, November the first, and we are already in the month of November. It is just a minute after the 10 o'clock hour. We're here in 901 Main Street in the heart of Old Town Conyers. And Commissioner this year is moving right along.
It's dumb.
We will start. Executive Director Rutledge, I believe we've got some, we have some special recognitions this morning?
Yes, we do. We have three of them.
All right, we will follow the order that you called.
All right, we will start with the DaVinci X robotic surgical system video presentation.
All right, that's a mouthful.
It is, and I'm sure I butchered it, so.
My name is Dr. Xiaoshu Bing. I'm a general surgeon here at Piedmont Rockdale Hospital. Behind me, you'll see the DaVinci XI robot. We use the smallest cuts possible in order to achieve our goal. It has a wide variety of advantages, one of them being minimally invasive. This means that we will be making very tiny incisions using tiny instruments and utilizing the robot to give us the mobility to accurately dissect tissues and to form the operation in the most precise manner possible. In terms of the patients, what they'll see afterwards is very tiny incisions, very small scars, and hidden scars. This machine is used by general surgeons in the belly, so in the abdomen. And we can do a variety of operations on the stomach, on the large intestines, as well as the gallbladder, and any hernias that are located on the patient's belly. So this is the console, which is the region where the surgeon will perform the operation. The robot will be actually positioned right next to the patient and will be doing the operation. However, it is controlled by the surgeon at this hub here. So positioning, we ergonomically position ourselves here, and then we control the robot using these controls here. If you can think about this as a video game. I can come into the operation and do what I need to do. Everything that I do here will mimic, the robot will mimic every position or any move that I do here. So I have a grape here that I'm going to grab onto and position it. And one of the good things about the robot is I can heavily magnify it to see as close as I need to see. So you can see every aspect of this grape. So we're going to go ahead and just peel it here. And again, because of the precision of the robot, it allows us to peel the grape ever And that's our robot. Again, my name is Dr. Xiaoshu Bing. I'm the general surgeon at Piedmont Rockdale Hospital in Rockdale County.
And we have CEO Blake Watts. Come on up, Mr. CEO from Rockdale Piedmont. Let's give Blake Watts a round of applause. Come on up and tell us a little bit about what's happening.
Sure.
You've made several upgrades and improvement, and I was just talking about your community involvement and the way you just stay on the scene here in the county. Talk to us this morning.
Well, I really appreciate the opportunity to be in front of everybody today and appreciate the partnership with the county in a variety of ways, with Commissioner Washington, Commissioner Williams, and you, Mr. Chairman. Especially during the pandemic, you know, it's been a difficult, you know, we're coming up on three years. And so the partnership that we had with emergency management and county meetings that we had very early on in the pandemic was very, it was very nice to have the support of the county throughout that, know that we could reach out whenever we needed, and really appreciated that very much. But I did want to give a few updates on the hospital, and I have a hopefully a brief presentation here today. But again, I'm Blake Watts, I'm CEO. I've been here at Piedmont Rockdale or Rockdale for almost six and a half years now. And I was previously the chief operating officer. I was here during the transition to becoming part of the Piedmont family. And then I've been in the CEO role a little over a year with some change in leadership. And really what, I wanted to stay at Rockdale because of the people at the hospital. I can't say enough about the medical staff, the employees, the dedicated employees we have, the community support that we've gotten. It's a great place, and that's what's really kept me here. And so, but we've been very busy even in the midst of a pandemic, and I wanted to give a few updates. So if we could advance to the next slide. Just real brief, our purpose and our promise as being part of Piedmont is to make a positive difference in every life we touch. And we take that very seriously. We have a lot of great examples of that, and we celebrate those each month. And we had a, we have an annual event where we recognize employees that have really exhibited our values and have lived this promise. And just to give you an example, just this month, last week in fact, we recognized one of our ED charge nurses who started a program in the emergency department called, she called it Threaded, with ED at the end of it capitalized, and stands for Emergency Department. But it is a, we have a lot of patients that might come in to the emergency department that don't have appropriate clothing, especially as we're getting into cooler months. They may have, their clothing may have been damaged or things like that. So they essentially created a donation closet where they are, they've collected clothes and we're giving those back to patients that need those when they are potentially discharged from the emergency department. So she was recognized for that. And that's, that's the kind of stuff we look for every day is how do we make a positive difference?
Very good.
Even outside the walls of the hospital. A little bit about Piedmont. So we were the eighth hospital to be part of the Piedmont system. So there, Piedmont has 19 acute care hospitals throughout really the central and northern part of Georgia. And we've added hospitals recently, as recently as earlier this year, with three hospital system in Augusta, which was formerly the university system in Augusta. So we're, we're a big system, and there's a lot of benefits to being part of a system. Next slide, please. I think it advanced a little too quick there. There we go. Just to give you an idea of the footprint of Piedmont, when you think about some of the larger cities in Georgia, of course, Atlanta, Athens, Augusta, Macon, Columbus, we have locations, hospital locations. In fact, one of the recent statistics is that 80% of Georgians live within a one-hour drive of Piedmont Hospital. Next slide, please. So specific to Piedmont Rockdale, up until this year, we were 138-bed hospital. We expanded. I'm going to talk a little bit about that, but we are now 161-bed facility serving really Rockdale and Conyers. And again, we joined Piedmont, we just passed our five-year mark, which has generated a lot of investment back into the hospital, which ultimately serves the community. Next slide, please. Some facts and figures. So we have a little over 1,000 employees at Piedmont Rockdale. I think that makes us one of the largest private employers in the county, maybe the largest. When you factor in all of our employed physician practices, it's higher than that. Good number of volunteers, and in fact, we're trying to recruit additional volunteers as we are coming out of the pandemic. There had been some decline in that. Over 650 physicians on staff. Just a few stats, we do over 1,600 deliveries each year, and this was 2021 figures. We did almost 42,000 emergency visits. Prior to the pandemic, we were really approaching around 50,000 emergency room visits, but every hospital nationally has seen a little bit of a decrease of ER visits during the pandemic. Over 5,000 surgeries, over 50,000 outpatient encounters, and over 9,000 admissions each year. Next slide, please. Just a little bit about our growth and enhancement and services. Really, if you, if we look at some of the key services we provide, we are looking to expand and add more to most, every specialty you think about, from orthopedics to general surgery to gastroenterology. But these are some things that we have either added or have enhanced over this last year. Some key areas that were really new is a Piedmont oncology service. We opened a practice within the hospital, providing a lot of chemotherapy services, and it's really a comprehensive service as well as heart, really a comprehensive heart care. We do interventional cardiology at the hospital. We have a heart failure clinic that we started. And so just a lot of really key areas that we're focused on. Next slide. Very proud of a lot of our accreditations and awards that we've achieved. We had DNV as an accrediting body for hospitals, and we had our full survey this past year and did very well on it. So it's really, they always look for process improvement and things that we're focused on, and it was a really good survey, as well as we had our lab fully accredited by the joint commission this year. So it was a, it was a busy year in the midst of everything else going on. Next slide. Also very proud of our outreach to the community. That's a very important part of what we do just this year. Some things that we have done is we donated back in the winter about 85 new coats to the Rockdale Emergency Relief. We've adopted a mile. In fact, I was out there a couple of weeks ago walking Sigman and Milstead, and we were picking up trash. It's amazing the things you find on the side of the road, but we're trying to keep that as clean as possible and.
We certainly appreciate that.
We donated medical supplies to the Career Academy. We donated over 2,000 COVID test kits to various organizations, really not-for-profit, community-based organizations such as Unidos Latino Association and the Rockdale Men's and Women's Houses in Phoenix Pass. Happy that we restarted our volunteer and work-based learning programs at the hospital this year as we've seen COVID improve. We've been allowed to have those back in operation. We hosted a big active shooter training drill at the hospital this year, and we continue to do a lot of cross-blood drives. The young lady there on the right, from my standpoint with the blue scrubs, that's my daughter, and she actually volunteered this summer, and I told everybody to put her to work as hard as possible. Had to show off that picture. Very happy, too. Our courtyard, we did a, you know, worked with a local organization to have a mural put up, and it's really brightened up that courtyard, and our staff and patients and visitors really enjoy that. Next slide, please. These are just a few pictures. We just completed a $12.6 million renovation and expansion project. You know, really the cornerstone of the project included a brand-new 21-bed IMCU, which stands for intermediate care. That's really the level of care between a patient needing critical care or ICU care and general med, medical surgical type care. So it's, it's usually a patient who is not quite sick enough to be in the intensive care unit, but a little too sick to be in our med-surg unit. But it was a, it was really an empty space that we renovated and expanded. These are actual pictures of it. It's got a beautiful view up, it's in an area called, we call Building A, faces Sigman Road. And so that's the, a picture of the new unit. Next slide, please. These are some additional pictures of, they're very spacious rooms, all brand-new beds, equipment. The picture down at the bottom is our pharmacy room for that unit, and includes something called a Pyxis machine, but it's very high-tech and includes barcode scanning and a variety of other quality and safety measures that we have in place. Next slide. One important thing, the hospital's grown over the years, but the kitchen never really grew with it, and that's a critical part of what we do is feed people. And so we expanded our kitchen. Those pictures on the right include revamped kitchen area that's much more spacious, and the bottom picture, there's actually a walk, inside the walk-in cooler, which is probably six or seven times bigger than the one we had before. And then we renovated older parts of the hospital that we call Med-Surg 1 and 2. It's in the Building B section of the hospital, and that's a picture there of it. We opened up the nurses' stations, we put in brand-new beds, TVs, flooring, really complete renovation of both of those units. And we, like I said, we finished that project at the beginning of August this year. Next slide. I really appreciate the video on the DaVinci XI robot. We've, we've had a DaVinci robot almost 10 years at Piedmont Rockdale, but it was the SI. And this is the brand-new technology called the XI, and the difference is quite astonishing in the technology and what it allows the surgeon to do. Again, that's another investment of, you know, almost $2 million, that piece of equipment. We're very happy that we had a demo unit that we were able to show off and showcase to the community a couple of weeks ago, and I really appreciate everybody. Everybody was worried about breaking it, and I said, I said, "That's the demo unit. We're not worried about that one."
That was me. I was like, "I'm not gonna..."
The real one was up in the OR, so. But yeah, very excited about that, that technology. Next slide. Another investment we made is upgrading our, all of our mammography capability to 3D mammography, which is really the gold standard now. A lot of the women and men that need mammograms are really seeking 3D. It's really the best technology, and so we're happy that we upgraded everything to include that. Next slide. Just a few things that, you know, you may not know about. You know, prior to Piedmont, you know, it was, it was interesting working in the hospital. There were times you might have difficulty finding a physician, which seems counterintuitive working in a hospital, but the amount of hospital-based programs we have brought in since being part of Piedmont has changed the dynamic in the hospital. You really can't walk down a hallway without seeing a physician and seeing what they're doing inside the walls of the hospital. It's really elevated our, the quality of care that we've provided. But we have, our internal medicine or hospitalist program is Piedmont-employed. All of those doctors working just in the hospital, taking care of inpatients on a daily basis are Piedmont. And then our pulmonology group, we have, it's Piedmont Pulmonology Group. They have, they open an outpatient practice right across the street from the emergency department there from Milstead. But they also provide 24/7 intensivist coverage in our ICU. So they're providing, you know, taking care of those critical patients 24/7. Piedmont Heart Institute is another service that we've had for a number of years, but we, we have them in-house 24/7. So they are providing consultative services to inpatients, they're seeing patients in the emergency department, and then if someone needed emergency cardiac cath procedures, they're on-call and available. We have a laborist program, so we have OB doctors that deliver babies, they're in-house 24/7. So the ability to, for a doctor to get up there and deliver a baby is much quicker. And then we have a neo, very busy neonatology unit. We have a 20-bed NICU, Neonatal Intensive Care Unit. We're one of the busiest in all of Piedmont, in fact. But we have our neonatologists are available as well for, for the babies. Next slide. So I'm going to, these are a couple of new physicians that have come on board this year. All of really different specialties. Probably the only thing they have in common is they look so young and make me feel really old when I'm meeting doctors these days. But we have Dr. Janice Clark is a brand-new family practice doctor. She's working in the Wellbrook Family Practice location right across from the hospital in the Wellbrook Center. You saw Dr. Bing earlier, general surgeon, just joined us in August. And it's so impressive, their credentials, where they trained, their residency programs. They are, they're high-caliber doctors. I can't say enough about them. Next slide. Two additional, Dr. Tanksley is one of the new pulmonologists. So she not only would see patients in the practice, but take care of our intensive care patients. And Dr. Vin Catison is a new interventional cardiologist. He's been very busy and active, and so he's the one doing heart procedures, cardiac cath procedures in the hospital. So we're very happy to have all of these doctors. The one that's probably not on there is Dr. Bowie, who's a brand-new outpatient neurologist, and she joined our existing neurologist in the practice. So we have now two Piedmont neurologists practicing here in the Sigman Road Medical Office building. Next slide. And then some additional providers that are coming on board. This year, we have Dr. Patel, who's a general cardiologist who will be joining Piedmont Heart, and his practice is right there in Building A of the hospital. Dr. Stephen Zabo is a new oncologist that will be joining Dr. Bumani, our existing oncologist, in February. Very excited to have him join us here, and he'll be dedicated just to Conyers and Rockdale. And Dr. Yang is a new family medicine doctor who'll be starting in August next year. You have to get them early. It's like college football recruiting. We're getting them like juniors in high school now. Next slide, please. That's it. So, you know, again, appreciate the opportunity to come and give a brief update on the hospital. We're very excited about the direction we're going. Fortunately, our COVID community transmission numbers have remained relatively low now, and so it's allowed us to get back into what we enjoy doing every day, and appreciate all the support that the county provides us.
Commissioner Washington, any comments or questions for CEO?
Well, thank you for coming and giving, not just us, but the community, an update on everything that's happening in Piedmont. You know, we go by it so often, and we, we don't see all the inner workings, but I was very, very impressed with the robot. And I was, like I said, I was one of the ones that, they were like, "Come, Commissioner Washington, use the robot." I was like, "No, no. Y'all don't have enough insurance on that robot for me to use it." But I did get to use, since I found out it was a demo, I felt more comfortable, and so they let, so that was very, very exciting, and it was so good to, you know, to know that we're on the cutting edge of technology in Rockdale County. And I always, always, always will give, I feel like I'm indebted to the neonatal unit because that's where Kevin was, was brought into this world, and they took such good care of him and my daughter. So always will be appreciative of all the good care that we've received at Rockdale Piedmont.
Thank you for that.
So you mentioned the need for volunteers. You talked about volunteers. Give us a couple of examples of where you all are needing volunteers now at the hospital.
Sure, so our auxiliary, many of them are retired and they have a little more time to devote, but they do a variety of things. They welcome visitors at various entry points at the hospital. They work alongside the staff, sometimes delivering supplies or delivering things we need. A lot of it's just based on, you know, what their capabilities are and what their, where their interests are. We have one volunteer who's been with us for a very long time, who is actually a cancer survivor, and has, you know, he's there. We have our PET CT scanner. It's a mobile unit, and it comes to the hospital every week, and that is specifically usually doing scans for cancer patients. And he, through his experience, can relate and is almost a, you know, kind of a shoulder to lean on for those cancer patients who are worried and concerned, and he's been through it. And so a lot of times we have, our volunteers have had experiences at the hospital, and they want to give back. And we'll put people to use wherever we can and wherever they're interested in working.
Very good. Is there a number, if someone's watching this broadcast, if they say, "Hey, I want to volunteer at Piedmont Rockdale," is there a best number for them to dial?
Sure, I would, the main number, 770-918-3000. And then, of course, there's a lot of information on our website, Piedmont Rockdale. And if you call that main number, ask for volunteer services or the auxiliary, and they'll get you to where you need to go.
Well, that is just good news. We're always getting folks who are interested in our community in volunteering and being a part of how they can give back or serve. I'll tell you, again, Mr. Watts, it's just refreshing the level of leadership that you've brought to Rockdale Piedmont, and your community involvement all throughout the community is just very clear and very positive. And we appreciate all of the changes and the updates. We're learning about what's happening here at our local hospital. Oftentimes, people complain when they're in the emergency room because their emergency is their emergency. And a lot of times, folks are not quite as patient as we need them to be, not knowing what may be coming through the back door of the emergency room, whether it's a gunshot victim or somebody having a heart attack or stroke, which may take precedence over a tummy ache or a headache or toothache. But we certainly do appreciate what you all have done. I think the, the big piece of boasting is how you navigate it through COVID and the level of care of your staff and the folks that work there at the hospital makes a big difference. So thank you so much. Let's give Blake and Rockdale Piedmont a round of applause.
I just got a text, somebody asking me how they can get involved with the Threaded
If you'll call that main number and ask for administration.
Okay.
And we'll get you in touch with the person who's leading that. And I appreciate the interest.
All right. Thank you so much.
All right.
See you the days ahead. Thank you. All right, next up is, we've got Deputy Director Jamison.
That's correct.
All right, come on up Deputy Director Jamison, RWR, customer service update.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Good morning.
Madam Commissioner, how are you this morning?
I'm good. How are you?
I'm well. Thank you for asking. Well, Rockdale has some exciting news. You know, we just got to finish talking about Rockdale Piedmont, just finished talking about COVID and our ability to rebound and to move forward. You know, we are in a new norm, and we're excited that the human body and mind are one of the most resilient things we have out there. With that, in 2020, March of 2020, we all know what hit our land. And this board, along with Rockdale's leadership team, we were swift to stop all disconnects and late fees for Rockdale citizens. And we, it was the right thing to do. Things were uncertain at that time, and you all have been very benevolent in that. Rockdale has also been very benevolent because many utilities have already returned to disconnecting customers who are unable to pay their bill or to be proactive in contacting them to work out payment arrangements. What we're trying to do now is reengage our public and letting them know that as of January the 17th, Rockdale 2023, the day after King Day, that Rockdale Water Resources will be re-engaging in disconnects for customers that have not paid their bill on time. We're doing this early because we want to make sure we give our customers that still might be having a problem getting over that hurdle, you know, finding their way back to pay that bill. We want to get to them early and let them know that Rockdale Water Resources is certainly open to having a special payment arrangement for those customers who have bills, residential customers who have bills over $500, and our commercial customers with bills over $1,500. Also included in this correspondence, Mr. Chairman, Madam Commissioner, we're letting them know about our LiWAP program. This has been a program that's a federally funded program that has already helped over 300 residents in Rockdale County with over $160,000 to help them pay their water bills that are in arrears, or for some who are not in arrears, just need the additional help. So we've also included that phone number in this communication that will be set to go out this week, and that phone number for those that are listening or watching is 770-929-2500.
And what's the name of that program again?
LiWAP. It's the Low Income Water Assistance Program. So it's, like I said, it's federally funded, and our local PCA has been helping facilitate that particular program. So if they reach out, they'll get somebody, I will tell them to reach out early, everybody to reach out early. One of the things that I would caution everybody is waiting until January the 16th because that is a federal holiday, and they won't be around that day. And that's the days that our trucks will be rolling to ensure that we're being good stewards over, over the resources we have there at the Water Department.
Deputy Director Jamison, first of all, let me just say, Commissioner Washington, I really appreciate this update. When you think about what we've gone through in terms of COVID and the hardship that a lot of people encountered during that time for different financial reasons... for different financial reasons, this was a plus that we were able, as a Board of Commissioners, to authorize the Water Department, number one, not to shut off or disconnect anyone's services. Then the special arrangements, the fact that you can contact the Customer Service Department or go by their office, sit down and talk with them, each individual case is different. But they will work with you. The point Deputy Director Jamison made in a meeting yesterday is that, Mr. Chairman, let's make it plain and clear now. There's no free water in Rockdale County. However, we will work with folks and make sure that they can continue to have service. But this program that he's talking about as we approach 2023 in January, he's giving an announcement that we're going back to pre-COVID operations in terms of holding people accountable to pay their bills. But even in that, we're still going to work with you. And he's saying, "Don't wait till the last minute and get ahold of them early." But so many of the other utilities, as he stated, have already began to disconnect services that folks are dealing with different situations. But what we want to do is get ahead of the game. And I really appreciate that level of leadership. Oftentimes, and I'll tell you, I've had one phone call or text message throughout COVID from any citizen regarding water or water issues. And I think it has so much to do with this program that we have in place and what we've already done throughout this time period. Any comments from you regarding water?
Well, I do appreciate the fact that it's two months. We're giving them over two months, all of November, all of December and half of January, two and a half months, to at least make their arrangements. So that is, that's commendable. And so with this, these arrangements, are we putting them on a payment plan? Or some, what is this? Like if they have 500, they owe $550. They would have to pay it in monthly installments, you know? And isn't it on a case-by-case basis or how is this?
Well, we're certainly going to treat every case different because everyone's in different situations. But what's typical, if someone has a $500 bill that they owe, if we're able to split that up into six months or eight months or, you know, 10 months and say for the next 10 months, we're going to have you pay an additional $50 in conjunction with your current bill. Now, it's going to be very important that they stay current because if they don't pay the current bill in conjunction with what they've agreed upon with the payment arrangement, then that removes them from the payment arrangement and it expedites their ability to be, and their eligibility to be disconnected. So yes, ma'am.
And these notices that they're going out in the water bill, how is that going to be advertised?
Yeah, wonderful question. So we're going to do a few things. We've already talked to our PR team. So we're going to do some social media updates and we're going to put it out there. We're going to put them in the bills. We're also, for those that are choosing to pay their bills electronically, they'll also get an email alert of that. And we've just talked to our payment, our payment processing vendor. We're also looking for a screen pop so that when they log into their account, it actually, the first thing you do before you get to pay your bill, it's alerting you and saying, "Hey, we have some important information from RWR. Look on the screens there." I know it's kind of hard for me to read as I get older. But that is a copy of our letter that we're sending to the customers. And we try to be forward-thinking also because we know Rockdale's a diverse community. We actually have it in English and in Spanish to ensure that we are fleecing as many citizens as possible.
Now, with the, are we also advertising the assistance program? Is that part of the advertising that we're doing?
Yes, ma'am, that's right, yep. So it's right there on that letter also. We're giving them that letter. And if y'all recall from other meetings we've had, we've advertised this several times. It's just trying to put it out there as much as possible. It's been in our newsletter. So we've really been trying to get it out there for over a year, letting folks know, you know, our finance team has worked really hard with us in conjunction with getting that on, but it's on the letter also.
It seems like there's no stone that hasn't been turned over in terms of the communication piece. I'm so excited to hear that you're working with the PR team to make sure that we use every medium. In addition to what he mentioned, Deputy Director Jamison will be right here at our BOC meetings constantly reminding us on the floor. And we'll be calling him up so he can continue to repeat this as we move toward January. And then the last thing, he stated, "This is nothing new in terms of the special arrangements and the installment program on a case-by-case basis." I have to reiterate that there is no free water in Rockdale County. And after this time period, January 17th, we're going to go back to making sure that we hold everybody accountable. However, we recognize that some people are in different situations. That's why he's here. That's why we're sending out the information so that you can get ahead of the curve and do what you need to do to make sure that you're provided service as we move into the new year. This is really good proactive measures, making sure that we get ahead of this by announcing it throughout the whole month of November and December, and again, about half of January. So we asked that folks who are watching and listening to the broadcast that you would share this information with other folks who may not be aware. But I have to say this because, you know, whereas we have a benevolent spirit to help and to give and to share and to work with folks, we don't want people taking advantage. We have to have the resources so that we can operate the Water Department. We have to pay for personnel and repairs and all of that. So we believe that people have to be forthright with the level of integrity to make sure that when they come to our offices seeking and asking for help, that they're being honest about the help they need and we can provide that help. Thank you so much. Let's give Deputy Director Jamison a round of applause. Executive Director Relidge, right before we move forward and keep it in sync with our present schedule today, what I'd like to do is get a couple of these directors' presentations out of the way, if that's okay. And then we'll go back to our agenda review. And I'm going, at this time, ask Director Redman to come up from Parks and Recreation. They've got a big deal coming up this weekend and I want him to share with the county, remind everybody about what we're doing out of Parks and Recreation.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Yes, as the Chairman has said, we have our Fall Festival coming this Sunday, November the 6th, at Parker Road. The event will take place from 2:00 PM to 8:00 PM. And there will be multiple things happening at this event. It is an event for all ages, Kids' Own, Face Painting. We have a live concert by Grits and Jelly Butter from 3:00 to 5:00 PM. Then the event will conclude with a bonfire for the teens. It will be local schools present to announce some of the fall sports that's taking place right now, upcoming sports that's taking place. Basketball season is about to start, football season is going on, I think, along with volleyball. So we have several schools, public and private schools that will be in attendance. And also, and I omitted this last time, we also have a car show. I don't know how I left that part out because I like cars. So we have a nice car show there for everyone to come out and take a look at that as well.
You got a lot going on at that Fall Festival. You talked about the bonfire. Grits and Jelly Butter are one of Atlanta's hottest bands. They've been out here a couple of times. They always draw a crowd. And then the car show, you said face painting for the kids as well?
Still walkers, yes, Kids' Own. So it'll be a day filled with fun, family-filled day for everyone, for everyone to enjoy.
Very good.
I look tired because I know KJ's going to wear me out again.
Yeah, he's going to wear you out at this.
Again.
Well, it's good. We appreciate that update and looking forward to seeing everybody out at the Fall Festival. Parker Road, centrally located, the parking is excellent. You couldn't have picked a better location to do it. And I believe that the weather is going to be in our favor this weekend again. So.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you, Director Redman. Next up, I have Director Kelly from Transportation to give us a very brief update on the TIP program.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Chairman, good morning, Commissioner. We have a few brief updates from the solicitations for the Atlanta Regional Commission's TIP solicitation for the year, for 2022. First off, we have Sigmund Road Widening Phase III. We have funding that's going to be allotted to us in the amount total of 4.9 million for that project for right-of-way purposes. It allows us to move forward with that.
Okay, slow it down a little bit. We had a little bit of distraction and that's a big deal. Give us that number again. Yes. Say it again.
So related to right-of-way for Sigmund Road Phase III.
Yes, sir.
That will be the portion between Irwin Bridge and 138 or Loganville Highway.
Okay.
So right-of-way acquisition, looking at getting a property purchase for that area that have allotted 4.9 million. And that will be slotted for 2025.
Well, I think that deserves a round of applause. That's a big deal. Absolutely.
And then next project, Atlanta Regional Commission has provided for us, one less near and dear to our heart, Courtesy Parkway.
Yes.
We've talked about that one a little bit in the past. For 2024, we have a total of 16.8 allotted through the solicitation.
16.8 million.
Yes.
Yes, sir. That's another round of applause. That's another, that's progress, absolutely.
And last but not least, I know we do a lot with the parks here and I believe we're working with Director Hammer on this one particularly, the Rockdale River Trail for Conyers. We have a total amount of 6.8, but 5.5 million to cover construction.
That's a big deal, absolutely. Give them another round of applause. Yes. Director Kelly, let me say thank you for your leadership in coordinating with ARC, GDOT, and all of those agencies that allow us to apply for these opportunities. From a transportation standpoint here in Rockdale County, Commissioner, continue to move Rockdale County forward. You talk about Courtesy Parkway. I mean, literally, I believe without a doubt, we're going to be driving on Courtesy Parkway come 2026. Then the widening, this part from Irwin Bridge all the way to 138, the Loganville Highway included in that, that whole stretch, that's a big deal for Sigmund Road. And we just can't take any of that for granted. When you talk about the parks and the trails on the southern region of the county and the funds that we're getting to support that, that's progress for Rockdale County. And it's really, it shows the leadership of our directors and what they're doing with these corporate entities to support what we're having done here in Rockdale County. And here's what I'm saying. The fact that we have our own transportation summit on an annual basis keeps us on the radar. There are 159 counties in the state of Georgia. Rockdale geographically is the second smallest county. If we didn't have a seat at the table and a voice in the room, chances are, look at Rockdale, we'd get left behind. We set our own stage by hosting our own transportation summit year and year and year, having the leadership of Director Kelly, his Deputy Director William Brown, and all of our community partners to make sure that we keep Rockdale on a positive radar. I really appreciate, this is the kind of news our citizens need to hear. This is what we're talking about when we say strategic planning and moving our county forward. This is all about reimagining Rockdale. Give them another round of applause. Thank you so much. I think that was Redman, Kelly, Jamison, very good. All right, now we'll go back, Executive Director, to agenda review.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we will start out with item 514. Thermo Fisher Scientific through the Superior Court, through the Accountability Court Division. This is change order number two to contract 2017-198. This is to revise the regent pricing and to add the mid-rate BS-480. And this is at 48 cents per test cost. And this is for one year with option to renew six additional one-year periods. And if it's all right with the board, I will just continue to read until I'm interrupted. Thank you. All right. So item 515 is with Aramark Correctional Services LLC through the Sheriff's Office. This is for the food service for the jail in the amount of $1.66 per meal. The previous cost was $1.56 per meal. This is for 12 months with auto renewal of four additional one-year periods. Item 516 is with Crown Castle through the Rockdale County Emergency Management Agency. This is for the tower lease at 2120 Farmer Road. This is change order number six to contract 2007-45. This is for the rent escalation and it's an increased monthly rate by 5% from $994.99 a month to $1,044.74 per month, and this is revenue.
Good.
Item 517 is with Pinnacle Towers LLC through the Rockdale County Emergency Management Agency. This is for the Farmer Road location. And it's a, this is an agreement and memorandum of Second Amendment to the antenna site lease in the amount of $300 per month revenue. And it's through November 23rd of 2038. And item 518 is with Grits and Jelly Butter for the Parks and Recreation Band Performance for the Autumn Fall Festival at Parker Road Field in the amount of $3,500 and the date is November 6, 2022. Item 519 is a requisition through the Stormwater Management Department for the TERC rentals. This is for the continued rental of a mini excavator. This is change order to the original PO in the amount of $101,550, adding $10,350 for the new PO total of $111,900. Item 520 is a requisition through the General Service Department for Jerry L. Johnson General Contractors. This is for the Second State Courtroom Framing, Drywall, and ACT Ceiling in the amount of $77,312.64. Item 521 is a requisition through the Water Resources Department for Analytical Technology Incorporated. This is for the filter backwash monitors at the water treatment plant in the amount of $40,976.58. Item 522 is a requisition through the Technology Services Department for the VMware vSphere Enterprise License in the amount of $42,749.4. Item 523 is a requisition through Parks and Recreation Department for the Atlanta Hawks Basketball Club for the 2022-2023 Junior Hawks Uniform in the amount of $18,260. Item 524 is a requisition through the Clerk of Court's Office for Clerk Janice Morris for juror fees for 2022 in the amount of $30,000. This is a second draw from the budget line item to pay for juror debit cards. I, I'm sorry, I thought somebody said something. Item 525 is a requisition through the Sheriff's Office with Beatty Construction Incorporated. This is to replace the kitchen ceiling in the county jail kitchen in the amount of $21,730.
I'm going to thank you so much, Executive Director Relidge. I asked that Director Hammer if he would come up and just tell us what happened to that ceiling over at the jail? What's going on with the ceiling in the kitchen of all places?
Well, we were only partially involved in this so I can only speak to somewhat. But this is, the kitchen over there is about 2,000 square feet. So it's a very large area. Over time, the grease and all of the items in the kitchen started to degrade the ceiling system. So they're pulling all of the ceiling tiles out, replacing all of them, cutting in new lights and redoing the ceiling grid.
So was it actually deteriorating or?
Yes.
Okay.
But it was no accident, this is preventative?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay.
This is just wear and tear, so.
I got you.
Okay, thank you, Director Hammer. Next item, please.
Thank you. Item 526 is a request for surplus of equipment from the Parks and Recreation Department, Senior Services Division, and the General Services Department through building maintenance. Item 527 is an ordinance to make and provide appropriations for the period beginning January 1st, 2023, and ending December 31st, 2023. To make and provide such appropriations for the operations of the Rockdale County Government, its departments, boards, and other agencies and funds, including all elected county officers and their employees, county officers and their employees, to provide for the control and administration of all funds of such agencies from all sources, to provide an effective date to repeal conflicting ordinances and resolutions and for other purposes. This will be submitted for a first reading next Tuesday.
Good.
Item five twenty-eight is a special use permit case twenty twenty-two dash zero one, an ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County as amended to authorize a special use permit for a dog kennel at sixteen oh nine Valley View Road, Conyers, Georgia, three zero zero one two, to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This will be submitted for a second reading next Tuesday. Item five twenty-nine is a special use permit case twenty twenty-two dash zero two, an ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County as amended to authorize a special use permit for a daycare at twenty-four sixty-two Wall Street Southeast, Conyers, Georgia, three zero zero one two, to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This will be submitted for a second reading next Tuesday. Item five thirty is a future land use case twenty twenty-two dash zero four, an ordinance to amend the future land use map of Rockdale County's comprehensive plan as amended, so as to redesignate property located at twenty fifty-one Highway one thirty-eight Northeast from medium density residential future land use category to the high density residential land use category, to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This will be submitted for a second reading next Tuesday.
Okay.
Item five thirty-one is rezoning case twenty twenty-two dash zero seven, an ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County as amended by rezoning twenty fifty-one Highway one thirty-eight from R one and R and M one to R M, to impose conditions upon the property to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This will be submitted for a second reading next Tuesday. Item five thirty-two is rezoning case twenty twenty-two dash zero eight, an ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County as amended by rezoning nineteen forty-five Sigmund Road Northwest from R one to M one, to impose conditions upon the property to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This will be submitted for a second reading next Tuesday. Item five thirty-three is rezoning case twenty twenty-two dash ten, an ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County as amended by rezoning twenty-two ninety-four Iris Drive Southwest from C two to R M, to impose conditions upon the property to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This will be submitted for a second reading next Tuesday. Item five thirty-four is future land use case twenty twenty-two dash zero nine, an ordinance to amend the future land use map of Rockdale County's comprehensive plan as amended so as to redesignate property located at Zero Glen Road Northeast from medium den, from medium density residential future land use category to the high density residential land use category, to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This will be submitted for a second reading next Tuesday. Item five thirty-five is rezoning case twenty twenty-two dash twelve, an ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County as amended by rezoning Zero Glen Road Northeast from R one to R M, to impose conditions upon the property to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This will be submitted for a second reading next Tuesday. And item five thirty-six is a volunteer reappointment request of Ms. Sherilyn Adams-Hard, who is currently serving on the Board of Health. Her term is January twenty twenty-three through December twenty twenty-eight. And item five thirty-seven is with the United States Department of the Interior through the United States Geological Survey, also known as U S G S, through the Water Resources Department. This is for the bathymetry survey at the Randy Portier Lake Reservoir in the amount of ninety-nine thousand dollars, and the term is October first, twenty twenty-two through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Can we get an explanation as to what?
Yes, ma'am. I was going to call Deputy Director Davis, who is our Deputy Director of Infrastructure for R W R. He's walking up as I'm talking.
So, Mr. Chairman, I think also Deputy Director Jameson.
He's sitting on his end of his seat. He's like, he's like, put me in, coach. He's saying, put me in, coach.
I, I, I think, I think, uh, what has happened here, uh, Deputy Director Jameson had become the official spokesperson for R W R. So we just gonna yield to him, although Deputy Director Davis is the infrastructure man for the department. Uh, so whoever's up.
Well, yes, sir. Well, so I've been, we've been doing this for a while, and that's why I jumped up, uh, Mr. Chairman and Madam Commissioner. You know, there's been some concern about silt in our waterways for some time, and, um, every ten or eleven years, we do a, a bathymetric survey to ensure that, um, we, we don't have silt or that the silt is not a troubling concern for water resources. So we have reached out to the U S G S, um, about a year ago, and they've had some issues getting here. They've had some technical issues. Their boat wouldn't work. And so we finally were able to get them on the schedule, and we're able, some of our citizens have, of course, talked about this and have had concerns. So this is our way of addressing the citizens' concern and part of our, our, our standard operating procedures every ten or eleven years to have this survey done to ensure that everything going on there at Randy Porter Lake is what we're, is, is what we expect to get to, to do to ensure that we have water, uh, for the foreseeable future.
So they are slated to come out to Rockdale County to the reservoir, is that correct?
Yes, sir. It'll be in November this month.
No, this month. Okay. All right. And you'll give us another update, uh, during that time?
Absolutely.
I think we all need to go and cheer him on.
All right. Well, thank, thank you so much. Uh,
We're so glad to see you.
Davis, any, any comments or anything you have there? Are you, are you good with what?
I'm good with this.
All right. Let's give them a round of applause. They're, they're doing, they're doing their due diligence. Absolutely. Absolutely. All right. Uh, now we're down to public comment?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I have no public comment cards.
No public comment cards? All right. We're gonna make a last call for public comment cards. And anyone wish to speak, uh, and, and, and that has not filled out or completed a red comment card, you can do it at this time and we can rock and roll. All right. All right. None come forward. So at this time, I'm gonna go to board comment with, uh, Commissioner Washington.
I'm very brief, especially now that I don't have Commissioner Williams to remind me of what I forgot. But, um, the number, one thing is, I would like to thank all of the organizations that, um, that came together, even though, I mean, even if it was an individual effort to make sure that our citizens, our children had a very safe Halloween. Um, I've, I attended Excel's, um, I, I think they called it a festival, and I attended Springfield Baptist Church's, um, trunk or treat, and it just felt so good with everything that was going on to know that we had safe environments for our children to, um, you know, just to be, to, we, we felt safe. They had a good time. I was stuck to my bed this morning because, you know, I'm, I'm out of practice with this Halloween stuff. But I just felt really, really good to, it, it was good to know that we had such a great, we have such a great community. Um, we did have an incident, I think it was Saturday, um, at a party, and I would like to commend our first responders. And it was teenagers involved, and I heard there was a lot going on. But the other thing that I heard was that our, our Sheriff's Department did an excellent job with getting teenagers to their parents and parents to their teenagers and, um, just like really making a bad situation, doing the best they could. So I'm, I'm pleased with that. And I just, I'm very saddened that, uh, we have to have those concerns with our, um, uh, teenagers. You know, we want our entire community to be safe. So, you know, talk to your children. Don't let them be the bullies.
Right.
You know, somebody's the bully and somebody's bringing their weapon. So it could be your child, and so talk to your children. Um, the last thing, um, um, this is the month of November, and Thanksgiving is my favorite holiday, um, just because it's a family day. There's no, we've spent money on food, but there's no gifts or anything, um, like that. So, um, I'd like for people to do, to participate with me in thirty days of gratitude where, send me what you're grateful for, email me what you're grateful for. I'm gonna try to do a little present, not, not presenting here, but do a, do something where I show what the citizens of Rockdale County are grateful for. I've been doing great, um, gratitude for the past, since maybe May. Um, and so it, it really helps your day because you see how good, we, we have great lives. So, um, when you write it down, the things that you're grateful for.
Right.
Um, it, it helps things out. So that's what I would like to do for the month of November is, um, reflect on all of the things that we're grateful for. So that's all I have for right now until you remind me.
Well, I like your, uh, your month of November initiative, expressions of gratitude. I think this is the best time of the year, uh, to talk about being grateful and, and expressing, um, gratitude to the people, uh, in our lives for so many different, we're, we're blessed, uh, just to say the least. Uh, but I do want to, a couple of items, I want to, um, ask Chief Sanders if she will give us the update. We had our second war on litter back on October the twenty-first, uh, in conjunction with the City of Conyers. Chief Sanders?
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Um, we had actually for the war on litter, it was a really great turnout. Eighty county volunteers, forty from the City of Conyers. We had twelve of our county departments that were represented. The total trash that was collected was in excess of six thousand pounds. Uh, we removed three illegal dump sites. So we had a, a really great turnout. Um, would like to thank the City of Conyers, Mayor Evans, and the Tony Lucas, the city manager, as well as all of our staff, um, especially code enforcement and Mr. Doug Chandler and Jessica Palet that were out there. E M A was out there, the risk managers. And this year, we did a little different. Our zone leaders were not our directors and deputy directors because they had other commitments. We actually had other leaders throughout the departments that stepped up to lead a team. So, um, that was really, that was really awesome to see that. Everyone was out there bright and early in the dark with, uh, out gathering and getting their safety briefings, um, and really well represented. So we had a great turnout and just wanted to say thank you to all of the departments and the City of Conyers and everyone that participated.
Well, and, and thank you, Chief, for that update. I tell you, as she mentioned, six thousand pounds of trash and debris that was collected. Well, the truth of it is, we did the first war on litter back on March the eleventh. Well, that number was much greater back in March. So, uh, there've been some improvements made. Uh, however, when I talk to the boots on the ground and, and the person of Cory Brown and Doug Chandler, uh, they still tell us that, uh, they go out, they pick up on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, someone has placed debris back out there. So they're repeating. So, so you'll know and understand, we have the county broken down into six zones, six zones. Uh, you have code enforcement, uh, in, in a zone, and you have the community improvement team in a zone. That covers both, um, the north side and the south side of Rockdale County, uh, and it also includes Old Town, even though the city has their own, have their own, um, code enforcement team. We take care of the community improvement. We're constantly asking citizens, uh, not just on March eleventh or October twenty-first, but we're doing this all year long, keeping Conyers and Rockdale clean and beautiful. And we're asking folks to do their part to make sure they put the waste and dispose of it in the proper place. In addition to that, I have to mention that we have a recycling center. Uh, for a very nominal fee, you can take a truckload of household waste and debris right over there on Sigmund Road. They have hours that are conducive to our lifestyles out here. Take advantage of it. Last thing about the war on litter, I want to say, if you see something, say something. And a big shout out to all of those citizens. We've got a handful of citizens, Commissioner Washington, who constantly call us, and we appreciate them calling us because as soon as they see something, they say something. And, and that helps because we don't have a truck or car or vehicle in every crack and crevice of the county. And we may not know what's happening up on the north side on Corley Road or on the south side on Tucker Mill Road. We need to know that if there's something out there, let us know. Uh, also be patient with us. I got a call this Sunday, uh, while I was at church. I got a text message, and the gentleman said there were three deer and two possum on the south side at two twelve and the Oglesby Bridge Road or the Camden Road area, and, um, our crews were not able to get out there Sunday. Uh, in fact, when I reached out to one of our leaders, uh, one was celebrating a birthday out of town, and guess where the other one was? At church. So we had to wait. We were able to get to it at the top of the morning, the next business day. So we asked that you bring it to our attention, but be patient with us. Uh, we don't have people picking up dead caucuses with blue lights and red lights that can hurry out to the scene. So if you see it, be patient. We'll get out there. We'll get it. And, uh, but this whole war on litter is a big deal because trash and debris will, uh, encourage crime and, and undesirable element into our community that we don't want. And we also want to be able to build up a sense of pride and a sense of community here in Rockdale County. So I encourage everybody, please, ma'am, please, sir, uh, do your part. Um, uh, and, and, you know, we don't have enough sheriff's deputies. We don't have enough code enforcement officers to be, uh, out in the roadways because the best way is to catch someone when they're in the act. We, we don't have enough people to, to keep up with that. So when you see something that's in, in the wrong place, let us know. Call it in and we'll get to it as soon as we possibly can. I appreciate the update from Chief Sanders on the war on litter. And again, a big shout out to Mayor Evans and our city manager, uh, Tony Lucas, uh, working in conjunction. This is one of those projects, Commissioner Washington, that we're proud to be working in conjunction with the City of Conyers. And I'm telling you, we cover a lot of ground when we execute on the war on litter. Chief, you had something you wanted to add?
Uh, one more item. Just, uh, wanted to mention that today, uh, we will start to see the front of the courthouse will be going green, and this is an initiative, um, Operation Green Light for Veterans, which N A C O started this year, and we are participating in. The board passed a resolution. Um, a press release went out. So we want to honor our veterans. So for the month of November, it will be green.
Outstanding. And, and thanks to Commissioner Williams, uh, for pushing that initiative that came down through N A C O, the National Association of Counties. As you know, uh, November eleventh is, is Veterans Day, and we make a big deal about it here in Rockdale County. We'll be out at the Walker Heroes, uh, Park, and we encourage everybody to come out that day. Or we'll also have on display, uh, the Eagle, our van that transport. We have over sixty-five hundred, uh, veterans who are either disabled or simply don't have transportation to get to their medical appointments. Well, we have a van, we have a vehicle, uh, that displays all of the armed services, and it is, uh, um, A D H compliant wheelchair mobility. Uh, you can get, if you have a wheelchair, I think it has space for two or three wheelchairs on, on inside the vehicle to get you to your appointment and get you there on time. Not only do we take you, we bring you back as well. So that's a big deal, and ev- every county doesn't provide this. So I'm kind of blowing our own horn here in Rockdale County. November, uh, as we approach Veterans Day on the eleventh of this month, we're gonna be lighting it up green all month long with all of our county buil- buildings. But on the eleventh, we're gonna be celebrating Veterans Day, and we want to encourage all of those that can come out and, um, give a big salute to all of our, uh, retired and, and active veteran, men and women who are serving. The next, next two things I have is, well, three things. Number one, and, um, Mr. C E O Blake Watts from, uh, Pima Rockdale, I think you'll appreciate this. Uh, so we certainly, we're, we're, we like to say that we're on the post side of COVID. We're, we're coming out of COVID. That's what I've been saying to our talent management director, that COVID is pretty much over, uh, for the most part. Uh, however, this flu season is coming in strong, and we're encouraging folks to make sure they get their flu shots, uh, do what they need to do, load yourself up with vitamin C, uh, cover your mouth when you yawn or cough. Uh, my grandmother didn't play. Uh, that was just plain old manners. And just, just, just understand when you sneeze or cough, cover your mouth, turn away, don't be all up in somebody's face with that whatever. I'm just calling that because this flu season, the flu will have you, like you, it could, it could put you in a mess. So don't take for granted the, uh, the severity of this upcoming flu season. In fact, it's already here. So I just want to, I think, uh, we're gonna be doing a flu clinic for our employees here in Rockdale County, uh, for those who want to take the flu shot. So I just thought I'd go ahead and kind of push that one really, really hard. The next thing, I am really super excited that this year, uh, is our fourteenth year of our senior citizen turkey drive. Now, I'm gonna talk this year about this one. I'm gonna be talking about it all month long as we give out these turkeys. Let me just tell you why this year is so different. Inflation, inflation, inflation. The cost of that turkey this year is extremely high. Uh, if you are in a position to be a blessing to our local senior, and you can afford to get an additional turkey, I'm asking churches, nonprofits, I'm asking fraternities, sororities. We've got over three hundred churches in this county. Uh, we've got koalas, uh, rotary, lions. We've got Leadership Rockdale. I'm calling y'all out. We have, uh, Chamber of Commerce. We have a Voices for Rockdale. We have everybody and their mama who can help us bless our seniors this particular year. These turkeys are costing this year and inflation. And so that's going, the bird is gonna be the most expensive part of that meal. And, and let me say this, I say it every year, there are some grandparents who are stuck raising grandchildren, and you know why. So they're gonna need the help. If you can find it in your heart, we're asking that you will go over to sixteen thirty-six. If you can find it in your heart, we're asking that you would go over to 1636 Dogwood Drive to Courtesy Ford. They've been our platinum sponsor year after year after year. That's the drop-off location, and then, we're going to be distributing those turkeys over at the Olivia Haydale Senior Center, I think it's November the 20th. We're going to do that in time. You know, Grandma liked to have her meal cooked and prepared about two or three days. She don't cook like these new schools, new school cookers who cook to get up the morning of and try to cook a Thanksgiving meal. Grandma, she going to cook her meal of starting fried, or say, "Y'all know what I'm talking about," and sit there looking at me like you don't know. You know exactly how she does. We need to get her that frozen bird, Chief Mac, well in advance so we can do what? Throw out. It's got to throw out. So, I just wanted to make sure I really drove the point home. A lot of you all are listening. We want to bless our seniors in Rockdale County. We're going to be talking about this. Oftentimes, folks say, "Well, Chairman, this, but how can I volunteer?" Well, let me be real, we need you to help us pass them out, but we've got that down to a science. You don't even have to get out your car no more. When they come, we put it, they pop the trunk, we put the bird in the trunk, we put it on the backseat, and keep it moving. What we need are turkeys. We need turkeys. So, I'm going to be driving this home as we continue to move forward. Last but not least, I'm going to call up our super excited Executive Director of Talent Management, Tony Holmes, and she's going to share the good news about leadership development and career development here in Rockdale County for our staff. Director Holmes?
Good morning, Chairman and Madam Commissioner. Do we have a video?
We have a video.
Okay.
Hello, my name is Nisa Brinson, and I am the Area Director, Area 31 Director for Toastmasters, and I just love Toastmasters. Toastmasters is all about building leaders and also just building your public speaking skills.
Good evening. My name is Alain Del Robertson. I'm the President of Toastmasters here in Rockdale, Rockin' Rockdale Chapter, and I just wanted to encourage everybody to just find out about Toastmasters. The role of Toastmasters basically is to assist individuals with their speaking, public speaking, as well as leadership, which is the reason why I joined.
If you're thinking or trying to understand what a Toastmasters meeting looks like, it will start with a warm welcome. Here at Rockin' Rockdale, they provide you with a meal, which is awesome, and then, a lot of times, there are prepared speeches where Toastmasters come up and deliver a speech, and then, there's also a section of the meeting called Table Topics where guests and other members can come and answer impromptu speeches. There's also a section of the meeting called the Better Listening Session, and that's where you get your evaluations, which is a really important part of the meeting, and you learn how you spoke in your speech and how you can improve for the next time.
My name is Gregel Stovall, and I'm a member of Toastmasters. I'm very new to this. I'm loving it, I'm enjoying it, and I refer other people in Rockdale to join that works with me all the time, so.
Be sure to sign up as a Toastmaster on toastmasters.org. There, you will receive a membership number, or you can sign in using your email and your password, and there's just so many resources that you can access on that website, from your pathway to other resources that are going to help you speak. It's just a wonderful way to start your Toastmasters path out on the right foot. So, join toastmasters.org. That's a Toastmasters clap, so we definitely believe in clapping and celebrating. As she stated, Toastmasters is not even just about public speaking, it's actually about effective communication. So, we are super excited. We actually relaunched Toastmasters back in person earlier this year. We were doing it via Zoom. Toastmasters actually takes place on the first and third Thursday of every month. It takes place at the JP Carr Community Center. That's at 981 Taylor Street. So, we definitely welcome everybody to come out. It is a community club, Chairman, so anybody, in addition to our employees, we provide it as a benefit for them, we also invite everybody to come out. Some of my favorite parts of Toastmaster, and we saw Simeon up there, was the joke master of the day, one of my favorite parts, as well as table topics. So, it is an opportunity for you to get up and impromptu speak without even having a prepared speech. So, sometimes, the speeches are prepared. The other thing is that you receive feedback, and I've stated this before, it's going to be my theme, feedback is a gift. So, I want my gift. I welcome all of you to come out and receive a gift as well. Again, it's every, the first and third Thursday of the month, and they have it up here on the site, 981 JP Carr. We've been in existence since 2017. The club's name is Rockin' Rockdale. So, thank you, Madam Commissioner, Chairman.
Thank you, Executive Director Holmes, and certainly to the leadership of our Toastmasters Club, Rockin' Rockdale, and all of our employees and our residents who participate in the Toastmasters program. One of the things I've been getting, the updates about how robust the class has been, the club has been, a lot of folks are standing room only. They really have brought people back out, but you're doing something, you're doing a deeper dive coming up here. I think you called Let's Toast About It for our executive level folks. We're going to do a little deeper dive. We have folks who, as you see, on a weekly basis, a lot of our directors and deputy directors are making presentations toward the Board of Commissioners and in the general public, but to make sure that we sharpen their skills. Tell us about that one coming up.
I will, I will. So, we are going to be hosting Let's Toast About It. It is a play on Toastmasters as well as Let's Talk About It. It is an opportunity for our directors and deputy directors, everyone, so now they'll get a sneak peek here, everyone will be participating in Let's Toast About It. It is going to be in the form of table topics, and table topics, again, is when you ask a question that you are not prepared to answer, that's what table topics are. It's a fun thing. You get one to two minutes to get up and speak on that topic. The other thing that we're going to be doing is what we call Icebreaker, and an Icebreaker is where you simply stand up and tell about yourself. So, it should be relatively easy to do, but sometimes, it does take a lot of courage to get up and speak in front of a group of people. So, Let's Toast About It is going to be our peers, it's a safe place. Again, it's an opportunity for them to receive some valuable feedback on public speaking and effective communication. So, November 30th, Let's Toast About It.
All right. Very good. Let's give Executive Director Holmes a round of applause. So many wonderful things that are happening in and around Rockdale County. We're excited about the upcoming Fall Festival. We just remind everybody that this weekend, you will be setting your clocks back, you will fall back. I also want to remind you again, school is still in session, and our young people are at the school bus stop in the dark. So, slow down as you're going through the neighborhoods and subdivisions, and even if you live in an apartment complex, we ask that you slow down. Again, I want to remind everybody, because I get this all the time at the HOAs, people want to put in speed bumps and all that kind of stuff to slow folks down coming in and out of their neighborhood. Well, most of the people who are speeding in the neighborhood, guess what? They live there. So, you need to talk to your neighbors, go to the HOA meeting, and call out your neighbor's child or son, or maybe your neighbor, him or herself, somebody need to slow down. Putting in a speed bump, that has a lot of impact on our fire services and ambulance and public safety as a whole. A fire truck having to navigate across a speed bump could cost us time and cost someone their life. Slow down is the answer. Again, if you're out in the community, particularly in the morning when our young people are catching the bus, we just had an accident this morning out on Grenade Road in front of Heritage High School, and as you know, our Transportation Department is already underway with a project to put a sidewalk out there to make that area much more safer for the young people who are walkers. We still have young people who walk to school. Slow down, people, slow, slow down, and put the cell phone down. Yes, I thought I'd throw that in there too, because a lot of folk, not only are they putting on makeup or eating or brushing their hair or shaving, they on the cell phone, and folks are just not paying attention at all. I saw a lady at the light the other day, the light turned just as green as green could be. She was in a heated argument on her phone, just yakka daakka daakka. I went on, I said, "Lord have mercy." I hope, hope she can come up before this cycle change, and these folks been, she been a road rage mess. People aren't paying attention, but you have to slow down and be very careful. The time is changing because it's going to be darker early evening and early morning, so you have to make sure that you be alert as to what's going on. Executive Director Rutledge, is there any need for executive session this afternoon?
Chairman, you really add the pressure, but no, Mr. Chairman.
Well, you know, a diamond is not a diamond without a little pressure, so. No pain, no gain. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much. Happy Tuesday. This meeting is adjourned.